Hi Captain, hi coffee.
I pleasantly made this suit of the body in the United States. To the Republic for which it seems one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome back. Everybody enjoyed the week off?
I worked on it.
And so I'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. I took a motion to approve the agenda in the minute.
So I'll second it.
All favor. Alright, we have an agenda. Rich, how you doing tomorrow?
Good, are you all good? I got a final pay voucher. I think it's gonna release and retain it also for local. On the final clause, contract was two point eight million bid. Final numbers are two point seven four nine, a little bit of savings there and local money. This payment will be for forty four thousand four twenty seven oh five. That's the retained agents and miscellaneous items we cleaned up. To get paid to the contractor.
What payment was that for?
This is for Rush North and then three ninety. Both projects combined. We can get that taken care of.
Is there a motion to approve the pay voucher for the paving last year? I'll make that a motion. Alright, is there any discussion on that? Hearing none. All favor I.
Just sign anywhere.
I'm curious, just underneath your name maybe?
That'll be fine. I'll just give it to Chelsea so she can pay it. Ulan's gonna start their portion of rock Monday. Waiting on some. Quality numbers. They did a abrasion test in-house and they're the third party abrasion testing. Get started by still on one from the DOT. Yes, make sure that quality of rock is where we want it. So. Their initial quality numbers are looking really good. So we'll see what everyone shows up. So. And start that today. Did some patching last week. Sorry. Didn't. I thought we had let you guys know that we were opposing road for a brief time, but apparently that didn't happen. So. I have. We've got that. I emailed you guys the complaint stream can proposal or whatever it was for our building. I don't know if you want to have any discussion on it or not. What your guys' thoughts are and what was here. Should we continue to sign and move forward?
Is that? Obviously what will work for you?
Well, I think right now.
As a shop pushing?
Well, there's some things we probably want to discuss, but I just, you know.
Should we have a workshop?
Sitting down and just talking to them saying, here's what we're kind of looking for as a target. Conceptually, this is, I mean, obviously we'll want to change some things conceptually, but for the most part, it looks like something we could, we could work out of. Whether we use like, whether we use all the diagonals or we have one stall there for the basic mechanics bay versus just storage, just, you know.
As far as the layout inside?
Yeah, yeah. Cause I know it's a similar to our layout in Mitchell County, but we do use one corner where we don't park anything. And that's where mechanic works on some of the other things. But a lot of times the mechanic can work on the diagonal stalls if there's a regulator that needs repair. Cause there's enough room for them to to jump up and anything like that. So conceptually, it looks like a good, good, good plan, but. We may want to sit down and iron some things out. Once we get, you know, I can get Lynn involved and sit down and talk. But I think, I think if I understand correctly, you guys wanted to maybe work on the office facility first.
Yeah, I think, I think we definitely need to get that going.
And so.
As far as this, I don't think we should stop on it, but.
Right. So then I thought, well, maybe it's, maybe with this concept, we should actually get with Jim. And B and K and look over and see if this is something really. We need to tweak anything in there or not, or whatever. I guess there was, you know, they had some estimated numbers in what it was gonna cost.
And that's the, that's a portion we kind of need. So you got an idea of where we're going.
Right. So they, so they did give you those, you know, rough numbers for the office building and then they give you rough numbers for shop. I don't know budget wise if that looks like it's where we're headed or.
I would need to know how much it's gonna take for a model on the other conservation building.
Right. So I kind of think the next step we were gonna. We were gonna talk about, I don't know if that's the great, a great place for the fuel station. Cause if you think about having to run power all the way out there, maybe move the fuel station somewhere else, but. If it's, if it's fine, I guess, then I don't know. If we need to sign this agreement and we start working with them and have a meeting. Jim and myself and their architect to discuss. Our building plus any renovations to theirs to find out what they're looking for.
Right. Yeah, I can discuss it with Jim for sure.
Right. Yeah. Well, our whole goal was to try to get this back and then Jim and I can sit down with them and figure out the office building and what we probably need or what we need to add to it. And then also he wanted to get with them and go to the other building and look through those.
Okay, just looking at the office portion of that, I didn't see a. Meeting room of any sort?
Well, they had like a break room in the back. And that's the other thing is was whether that, that room in the back was big enough for. There's a break room and then there's storage. I mean, I don't know file wise, what conservation has for files and what we're gonna have, you know, for. Hopefully we've got a big enough spot for files. So well, I don't, there's not much of them.
That's the only I know.
Description of the, the break room being if the break room is also considered an office bill or a, a meeting room or we have a bigger. A bigger area in the back for open. Kind of like eating venue versus a. Well, I don't need a break room that size.
Right.
So if they call it a break room versus a meeting room, maybe we make it bigger or, you know, more open. I guess it doesn't matter.
I guess I. I, yeah, I probably should at least one, if not all of us get together with B and K, you, Jim and do a workshop maybe. But I'm not against. Signing into an agreement to get started on it. Are you ready? You?
I just think that they, you and Jim gotta sit down and figure out what you want in that office. Yep. And that would be the next phase would be so we. They got an idea what we want. What's that?
Technically, it's not.
Right.
For what? Well, I don't know. The discussion, possible action counts or not. I don't know. Um, roads and conservation building project. Is that so general or to not general?
But if we're gonna be spending a lot of money, I think I'd rather have a.
For next week?
Yeah.
That's fine.
And we can still.
You can get a hold of Jim this week and figure out.
We can still get a workshop figured out.
Yep. So. Next step is probably see what V and K's availability is and what Jim's availability is and. You wanna be in?
That's fine. Yeah. But do you get, do you guys wanna be in on it too, or?
Yeah, I'm finding. A lot of money to spend. Okay, well, I'll, I'll contact. Send some emails around and.
Yep.
See what we're scheduled.
Okay.
Alright. I don't think I have anything else to bring up today.
Okay, you have anything else for Rich?
I'm waiting on hydraulics for some of these bridges. I did call and I finally got ahold of the. The same, the same business we use to get our railroad culverts also sells flat bed rail cars. But you'd need two flat bed rail cars probably to get them wide enough to even get a piece of equipment over there typically. I don't know if they're ten feet wide typically.
Yep.
But it's twenty six thousand dollars per and they're eighty nine feet long.
Not just for temper.
Yeah, I mean, cause we'd have, but I don't know if we need eighty nine feet of a crossing and then, well, they can cut them, but then you gotta weld.
Right.
Everything in, you gotta figure out how to. So I said, well, I'm gonna try to give WHK some a call and say hydraulically. They're, they're, they're trying to do the hydraulics. I said, based on what's there, wood, I mean. Could we just drop a rail car pipe in the hole and? You know, it might restrict flows, but if we can design it to go over the road, we've got. One house is being taken out. I don't know if anybody lives in the other house.
I think somebody lives there. I've never really looked at.
But considering that it's technically more of a driveway than it is a road. Do we allow overflow on the road? You know, when we get higher flood events.
I mean, I think the biggest concern with the guys is is they got about four hundred acres. They've got to get out of there somehow. It's fault.
Right.
I mean, Jeff could probably wait on burning it off if necessary. He just wants to get rid. He's got somebody willing to do it, right?
Right.
Correct.
Yep. My biggest thing is, 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 you know. Fifty two thousand dollars, which isn't a lot, you know, when you think about it in a temporary. We still have them, but then we've got crane costs and everything else.
But there to get the hydraulics. I don't know why that takes so long to get the hydraulic stuff.
Well, they're doing, they're doing six bridges for us and, and whatever other clientele they have.
Upstream, there's culverts.
But yeah, so I, I, I wanna look upstream. I don't remember what's upstream.
Wheelerwood or four thirty Wheelerwood. And then on eight thirty eight, there's culverts. There's no bridges. So I mean, the bridge is down. Granted, your water flow increases.
Yeah, yeah. I'd like, yeah.
It should be.
The next one, yeah, the biggest bridge is the one that just we did.
Yep.
By itself.
Okay.
But it's like you say, that's.
And if it's a, and yeah, I know, I know.
They can speed up that bridge particularly just.
And that's what I told them. Look, we're trying to get.
And if we're dealing with DD ten here anyway, if Elliot or Runners or whoever bid, we, I don't know if it's possibility that they coincide and get that, you know, they're gonna do some cleaning. If we're okay that and then they would be in the area. So you can get mobilization cost and things like that. If they can make it work.
I'll find out today where we're at with that and appreciate it. Just give me a rough. A rough number on hydraulics because we can always maybe design it for, I don't want it to overflow where the COVID is, but sometimes that might.
You guys are both wrong. So I'm done. Four hundred street that this bridge got.
Yep. Limited, it's got limited to ten.
Ten town, which is gonna limit those guys what they can do for harvest. Actually, right now it's pretty well limited to anything, actually.
The other thought I was trying to think is how can we stabilize the cracks that are in that back wall?
Again, you just spend the money. If they could speed up the hydraulics. I just can't believe it take that long, but I know they got their own pace.
Yeah.
So. I'll, I'll double check on the.
Appreciate it.
I don't have any more. That's all I had.
Yeah. Alright, thank you, sir. So drainage, start with DD seventy two information from the attorney. Forty one pages. I got through most of it.
I put the last page in.
That's all I need to see. It's ridiculous, but.
Proceed from here.
Some of it was repeats. Yeah, it seemed like it in the, in the first amendment. Yeah, so. Well, I need a motion to sign this information that'll be mailed to district court.
I'll make a motion to. District court.
Yeah, yeah. I'll second that. Alright, any discussion on that? Hearing none. All favor I.
Alright.
I, both.
I wasn't sure how to load that when I sent back to you. I was like.
Well, two is findings on DD thirty five. Uh, he hasn't been down there yet. I know he was in the area. Yeah, so, so I was there yesterday. He's, he's been working in the area. He's been out there doing some locating, find out what's going on and then get us an idea on price. So.
And that was Jim Love with Iowa Drainage.
Yeah, I did talk to Jim and, and. Yeah, that's what he was gonna do. Cause he was working in there. He said tree roots have been a huge issue with a lot they fixed. He said they found an eighteen inch pipe. Plung full and that usually don't happen on a big pipe like that.
He saw it out of water last, last three years. They've been searching out water.
He said, so it's, it's kind of weird the way these trees really have been going.
And I did call Sandy down Sercorto last week and told her that. We've got him looking into it and then we would let them know as soon as we find anything out about costs or repairs and anything. So we can keep them in the loop. And then if we decide anything, we can. Get together with our board and.
Right. And which, it's the same owners.
Yep.
Both sides of the county lines. Should be good. They have, not less good to keep them in the loop. So, so here's something for him. Maybe next week we'll have an idea. Discussion and possible action idols project, CDV twenty three and sixty eight.
So I forwarded that email to you guys. I think they were just kind of. Wanting to know if the tiles that are currently there. What kind of condition they're in. And I could not find any reports anywhere of any updates, any repairs made. So I think they're all original.
With their district tiles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're, they're worried about the one going south, right? Both, or after, after the ponds get built, there's a. There's an outlet going south. Yeah. And that's the one I think they're questioning is the shape, the condition of that one.
Original.
How far down does that go for an outlets?
It's never been done since what?
Since it was put in.
I read anyway.
Yeah.
And then there's two landowners that wanna put six inch tiles alongside that.
You know.
That should be their problem.
Yeah. When I messaged Jacob and Jacob said like, they put those in, those will be private. So that wouldn't be the district tiles.
They can definitely put them in.
Yeah, the big question.
Outlet pipe. Cause that the, the outlet pipe comes up and when the water, when the nitrogen's dropped, the water comes up and that goes in. If that's in good enough shape to dump that. Good water down farther into dumping in the stream.
And they said if that sixteen inch does need replaced, that they'll replace it.
Will be the time to do it.
Yeah.
Right.
There isn't that much. I mean, you're not talking to many few times. So all those guys will benefit from it.
I would think so.
Is that above the open ditch? One twenty three?
Be that too. I'd say yes. I mean, so the wetlands above whatever road where, where bridges are down. The wetland will be just north of there and it's almost all that somewhere down there.
Dumps into that ditch then?
Has to.
Has to.
Cause it goes up to Limploch and panels and those guys up there. So.
So what do they need? Just an approval on go ahead with the project considering they've already met with the landowners?
Yeah, I think we're just wanting some more information and.
Yeah. I think we did, but.
We all paid it back in December.
Yeah.
As far as like the repairs that may need to be done.
And they're paying for it anyway. As I recall.
So like the, the bigger ones, if it's a district tile, then the district will pay it. Which those would be the one main loans paying for it. Cause they're the ones on. Limploch, Hannah, Petersburg. I think those are the only three or four people.
Sixteen. Was the district paying for that or were they going to go ahead and pay for it? I read they were gonna.
If it's a district tile, they're worried about being in poor shape.
Yeah. I mean, the way I read it, like the Petersburg property, they said the existing sixteen inch main. Is in bad, you know, is it in bad condition? Must be replaced by idols.
They're, see, they're gonna pay.
But.
When they say.
This is the tile that the wetlands is gonna be reconnecting to after the water treated at the wetland. So.
Okay.
That's even easier. Yeah.
Good deal for them, guys.
Yeah. Cause they said that you guys approved the project on twelve, ten, twenty three.
So idols. Idols is gonna replace it. They're gonna pick up the tab, I would think. But I don't know for sure. That's the way you kind of read it?
That's the way I read it.
It's basically looking for a, a motion to, for improvements needed.
I think they're just getting us up to date because we already approved the thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it can't be that much main.
They said, would the district approve this modification or what do we need to do?
Well.
Was that a resolution there? So.
Was there a downgrading or?
Or just repairing it?
Went in the same size again.
So.
Yeah, I don't really know. I don't like that motion. Do we need a motion on that to allow them to?
Kind of, we're okay. Yeah, we're okay.
Would hurt.
So, yeah.
In that case, I second. I'm willing to make any improvements needed on that main.
Repairs.
Repairs. On the lawsuit. And you know, seconds it. Any other discussion on it? Hearing none. All favor I.
I.
I, both. Alright. Finish claims. You stand warrants. Do we have any questions or problems? If not, take a motion to approve claims.
I'll second it.
Alright. All favor I.
I.
Both. Oh. DD eleven, main F submitted by David Gibbs for a word order.
Yes. I thought he was stopping in late last week, but he did not make it in yet to sign that. So I need him to come in and sign up this week. Colton.
Looked at it.
Talked to him and then, yeah, those photos I emailed of the sinkhole and. Yeah, cause he's pretty sure it's like, that's the pipe and it's just. It's just all.
He wants Peterson to fix it.
Okay, motion for the reporter. Reporter for David wants for DD eleven.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Alright. All favor I.
I.
I, both. You know, was he gonna contact Petersons or?
I'll call him today. Cause I'll tell him I want him to come in this week and sign that too. So.
Question, possible action DD ten, last seven. Whoops. Got three of them. You guys got the email on this morning?
Yep.
Uh, Elliot for six thousand. Uh, Rodney's for twelve two fifty and Larson's for sixteen four.
They're comparable. You, you gave him, somebody gave him the footage, right? So they're all the same.
Footage is all there. Uh, one thing we may see is. I talked with Larson's last week. One we may see is where that. Outlet opens up, the pipes are funky, like sitting weird in there. And so we might have to replace. Couple of sections out. There's like a driveway or something right there that those go through, but. It's, yeah, it's, it's at the head. It's like. It's not a certain structure, but they're, so they may, a section or two of those may have to be replaced. But.
And those just aren't included in the quote, but.
No.
This is mainly just.
And neither, neither is any tile outlets have come across through there, you know. So I guess if they're there and they wanna investigate and feel necessary, it's, we're gonna replace them. That would just be an additional, but.
Right.
We don't know that until.
They didn't, but they've all got that above face.
Yeah, it's all in there on any, any outlets.
None of them.
Seeding and restoration.
Leveling is what they're at, which is pretty standard.
Right. Um, and yeah, now I'm gonna have seeding in there. Do we wanna? We're gonna wanna seed it? Well, I guess they're really farming right up to it.
Farm right up to, as far as I know, I don't, there was.
Along it.
Way back there, I guess. I don't know. There was some cedar P that's also that that's close to the road and intersection or cleaning is way back.
Most likely farming.
It's actually off. It's lateral. It's not DB ten itself, right?
Land lap seven.
Exactly. So. I don't know if there's back there.
You know, brother.
C R C, it's their responsibility.
Right.
It didn't say. It just said clean out one side level spoils at the mobilization.
That's the only one that doesn't mention. But the other two are saying they're not gonna provide seeding.
I would assume that is not. Yeah.
What's that?
So then they're all the same. Yeah, just three different.
Pretty much. Being on this.
There can't be much seeding there.
No.
If we had to, Rich, would you guys be able to seed that and just build the district?
Probably.
If, with hydro seeder, doesn't see, I don't think there's much there. If there is any, we have to find out if it's in a program too. On how that works, I guess.
Yeah, I'm trying to think. I just.
Which owners are.
It's on the south side there, which is on which side they, they're from.
Right. They could stay out of that.
Yeah, we could stay out of that.
We're gonna pay a lot of damage either way. So.
Either way.
Either way, we're better off staying out of this, the seeded portion. So we don't have an extra cost on that as well.
No. So I guess I'll make a motion to, was it A one was actually a little bit.
A one was, yeah.
So.
Yeah. There's a motion for A one, clean that ditch. Is there a second?
I'll sign it.
Any other discussion on? Hearing none. All favor I.
Alright.
I, uh, both. We look, I'm doing this, signing this thing.
No.
No contact.
I'll get Elliot today.
Any else though?
I think that is it.
Thank you very much. I've got some claims here. Nobody had any questions or comments up to the motion to approve the claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the claim.
Who else are gonna?
Yes.
All in favor?
Alright.
I, both. These are approved. Payroll claims. Are the motions are second?
I'll second that.
Yeah. All favor I.
I.
I, both. Motion carries. Report.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, first report, motion to approve. I make a motion to approve it for your cookie. All favors.
I.
Both. Uh, payroll. Changes at public health. For Shannon Butler and Lexi Anderson. I'm assuming this was determined by their board last week.
Yep, Shannon and the director and Lexi would be.
Is it an hourly or salary job?
Would you want to be soured?
Salary, so. Yep, Shannon will be seventy four, eight eighty and Lexi will be seventy four, seven seventy six.
And they're both.
Based on forty hours.
Absolutely. Yep.
So that's interim or that's?
No, this is. I mean, I must, I don't think the state has to prove it. I think we're okay.
Did you go, was it ten days?
Do we have it out there?
Yeah.
It was longer than that.
Okay.
I believe it. Ever since they mounted during the time. They figure out back in the long, I mean, it's like. I don't know what it was known.
Yeah. But the board was okay with it for they want to be. That's why it's here, right? So is there a motion to approve the salary changes for Shannon Butler and Lexi Anderson?
Oh, maybe.
Yeah, there's a, I'll second that. Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none. All favor I.
Alright.
I, both. Okay, lots of barriers. They're like some. Couple of them. Art Farm Iowa and ownership update for come and go. Is there a motion to approve both liquor licenses?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. Yeah. Any discussion? Hearing none. All favor I.
I.
Uh, both. High cap renewal. You want more paid work that got a lot of numbers out?
Yeah, I shared that with you last weekend. It actually came in more than what.
Projected.
Yeah.
It's always a good sign.
Yeah, it's almost half of the whole bash.
And as far as like Rich and Dan, maybe just answer easily or not. What are we keeping up on that? It's when the new equipment comes in and out. We've just got how many dozen computers, laptops?
Okay. As far as the totals go.
Yeah, okay. As long, I just wanna make sure we're covered on that stuff. So we don't. Something happens, we don't get up.
You had mentioned that we maybe should look at the deductibles.
Yep.
And you sent out this.
Oh, that was, um. They were. Talking about raising that, that was their, you know, there's always another option and usually they're ones to increase it, but that was actually to decrease it a little bit.
Right.
And that was. That was.
Went from, it went from two hundred on comp and three fifty on collision to a thousand on each one of them. But that was only gonna save us a thousand five hundred nine dollars. I didn't think that was a very good deal, but the other one. Where the deductible went from five hundred to twenty five hundred on the property saved us just about five grand. I think that's a good one there. Yeah. I guess considering you're gonna have more accidents with the deputies and stuff and it and deer, you know, just. To go from two hundred to a thousand and only save fifteen hundred and nine dollars is not a big savings. But the other savings are going from five hundred to twenty five hundred on the property. We can, we can do the twenty five hundred to fix stuff on the property. They're saving five thousand dollars. I think that's a good deal. So I, I would take the. Higher deductible on the property, but the automobile physical damage I would not. That's my theory on it. What do you guys think?
Well, yeah, because the number of deer it's been bad, you know, it's, you can't.
But property. Comp is deer. Collision is smacking somebody.
Yep.
And the deer, it wasn't just sheriff.
No, no, everybody's smacking deer out there.
There's more. It's just unfortunately. But you're right. I'm, I'm swaying.
I just didn't think for fifteen hundred dollar savings to jump that deductible five times.
But they want that money like. But they want that money like now, so, um, I'd, um, like to add that to the claims and I'll be ending up sending that electronically.
Sure.
Do you wanna motion that we do the property, increase the property deductible from five hundred to twenty-five hundred, but we do not increase. The automobile physical damage from two hundred three fifty to a thousand thousand.
And also that you might.
From all the part of a point.
With that, yes, we toward the claims is already.
Yeah.
So add that to the motion, pardon.
Yeah.
Just real pay it right away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pay it right away.
Okay.
We got a motion. We got a motion to increase our property deductible, leave our vehicle deductibles alone, and add this to the claims list.
I'll make that, I'll second that.
Okay. There any other discussion out? Hearing none, all favor I.
I.
I oppose. All right.
Thank you.
Stating carried. Came in less than what we projected, that means, I mean, to save on five thousand, that definitely helps.
You know, for property for ten five hundred dollars.
Yeah, uh building and grounds, anything on that?
Did you guys figure out anything last week on who's changing the light bulb?
You are.
Health.
What you get from this?
Oh, public health is done, I mean, maybe.
Who did?
It's, um, electrician, one electrician guy, they needed a whole bunch done.
Vice.
Yeah, I guess they.
Cause that's what I told them to get.
I thought they would have gotten LEDs when they did the remodel, but I guess not, so.
Really bad stuff.
Yeah.
So.
Cause I told Shannon that they just get vice to come and do it, that's.
I don't think pretty much change, and plus they had lights pictures of the plastic when I took them down, just literally fell apart.
So in that particular case, in a situation like that, are we gonna keep using them?
So especially once you get that.
Some idea what we're gonna do down the road?
Well, that's everything's getting switched over to LEDs, so that's just when that happens, they come in, they pull that ballast, pull the ball, put new balls in.
It makes sense.
It's got an electrician's job to be pulling ballasts.
Yes, well, I expect not everybody else.
Yeah, we just need the. Who's gonna change the light bulbs and stuff, not, not the.
You're right, leave anything there. Other than me, I said I would do it. I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna throw you under the bus while you're on vacation, so, and that's, if they're all covered there, I think that's all we have.
Ready?
Yep.
Right now, yeah. So, but I, I mean, I don't have a problem doing it. If there's bulbs out, we can, I can change it, it's not that hard, so.
There are some down here, but I don't know what ones they go to.
Yeah.
And water issues are just getting people like Midwest to come in and take a look at it.
Yeah.
Which I gotta. Did they finally get in to do that?
No, I gotta call them back again, I'm just thinking about that this morning, I pulled up here. I'll call them again.
Probably been busy.
Yeah, I'm sure. Doesn't stop right in, I wonder if we get good weather, they're probably on the run, trying to catch up.
So what else do we have to worry about, the boiler?
Yeah.
Um, oh shoot, okay, I, yeah, when that boiler inspection guy was here, he did give me a. Uh company out of Boston. Boiler company out of Austin, so I'm gonna reach out to them, I mean, maybe just plan to meet up with them, have them come take a look at it and see. What needs to be done annually, or something that they can do. You know. Fall and summer, when we started up and shut it down and.
And what about monitor?
Or what a monitoring like.
By now, we. Find out what we gotta monitor, what they would recommend, just just pop with them on it and see.
Didn't Levi say if it's a major problem, we'd have to get something like that, but otherwise they could monitor.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, they thought anybody told me that. Monitor, but if it gets into. Any, any major repair or something that.
We could get them to monitor it like once a week. How often do they get you to be monitored?
That's all ask these guys and find out, see what they recommend, I would feel the biggest thing is water levels.
I would assume that it would be it too.
Yeah.
So just the water level.
But I'll check with this, it was L and M's.
Something else.
I'll have a boiler.
Okay, building and grounds was pushed from Z, like, who do we get to clean them on the painting office or something? Is there anybody that does?
Paintings?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They like to update their paint.
Oh, which you know.
We just do our own.
You do your own.
Yeah.
That's why it's long, but. So, I mean. So we provide the paint.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go to hardware store and get the paint.
Good. Is that possible for them to paint it?
I would treat them so.
Wouldn't that buy them, but otherwise there are people that do painting.
Yes, yeah.
Like Gretchen Hanes, she does.
Yeah.
Um. I know, um.
I didn't know.
It's been done, it was done for, um, K, they had, I mean, recorders and.
Yeah.
Auditor done at the same time, and when you had your carpet maybe?
Yeah.
So it's been a couple of years.
Well, I'm guessing that was done when they remodeled the building, and they, it's kind of, well, it's baby blue or something, I guess. So they were just asking, I'll check, I guess, I really don't know what procedures on that, but. If. That makes sense, I mean, I know other places do that too, sometimes you want your room painted, you paint it yourself, we provide the paint, so. And around that, but I let them know, it's kind of like I'm thinking.
Right, that's. That way it's their own. Something we're getting into like replacing carpet, replacing this, then you start the painting on the project, then the ruined, complete room is gone, but if it's just changing the color.
No, I think it's just update, make the place a little warm. We have it over in Brown and Ling, but.
See?
Worked too, it was better of a place.
Yeah. Anything else on building and ground?
Was Peterson gonna come up and do that pumping out?
Yeah, he said he would, he would do it when he come up and did the.
Didn't bad?
No, no, I'm just, I know what you mentioned, then.
Yeah, I talked to him, he said when he does the, the drain, I said to look at these and. See what you can do with these while you're here, he said, yeah, he would do that, so.
Okay, are we supposed to call him when we're ready to do that?
I, I told him just when he's gonna, gonna do it, do it, but I don't know if you usually call him or not.
Yeah, usually we call.
Okay, so whatever you're ready, if you're ready to do it, then.
I'll just let him know.
Let him know, yeah, just to do yours, cause then he knows he's gonna do these as well, so.
And did you ever figure out where these window ones drain to?
Yeah.
And we looked at that that day, just the bits are just seat drums.
They're too, but. I don't think there is, we'll see if he can clean them out and see what's. In there.
It can, so we looked that day, it looked like that bathroom and this bathroom were. Lion out here. And we go into a manhole.
There on the same side out there.
I'm not sure.
Well, I'm not sure where the. Roof area.
We back up the I cap for just a sec.
Sure.
Oh.
Um, it looks like the increased limits are all or nothing. Cause it just says accept the increased limits.
Probably have to, just because the cost of everything.
Well, and I can ask to.
Ask them to see if we can split it out.
If not, accept them.
Yeah.
And then if we can't do that, do we wanna go to the higher deductible or leave it where it's at?
Could, I guess, because overall, they say there's an issue. Probably break even.
So it take two deer hits to break even. The other way, right?
Well, right.
You know, if you had fifteen hundred in savings. Going from two fifty or whatever to a thousand. Take you two hits. To offset that, you then you'd be out of your savings. Cause then you'd be paying more the deductible for the third one versus the first one. I guess, see what they say if.
See what they say.
If they'll let us split it out, split it out and then not. We still wanna do it, cause we're saving five thousand on the other side.
Save two and five.
Other savings there, so.
So it saves about fifty-five hundred dollars, so.
Hopefully we don't burn through all around.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
But.
Okay.
Drive.
It doesn't hurt to ask them. Uh Watermaine project, so. Um Jason's still working on. Pump numbers, can I get those figured out? Um. To replace those well pumps, before we get that tower into service. And then we did. So the casino did some water testing out there at their facility. And they come back with the pH of the water is high. And I, it's hard to figure out why it is, but, and then the hardness of the water is high as well. And that's where they're getting there, they've, we saw.
They're getting their dirty gray sheets.
And their fixtures, we saw the calcium on it, they've shown us pictures of. In their ice trays, there's calcium. Um, and they were gonna, when they changed filters on something, they're gonna cut it apart and get us pictures of that as well. Or get it to people's maybe cut it apart and see. How much calcium in there, but either way, the hardness test came back high, like.
That whole area is out there high, mine comes out in rocks.
Yeah, so. We, we soften the water, it, they should have plenty good water, soft water. In one area, they, they did put a softener in because it was hard, and I would say the kitchen area, because their ice, ice machines are finicky anyways, so on their ice machines and in their kitchen equipment. They put it in those areas, um, which they shouldn't have to, because we're actually. We paid for the stuff years ago and it's in that water plant, it should be working, right, so.
No.
Um. So that's where that. I don't know if you, you guys saw the. Resin analysis from Logan to send off to see if the resin, where it's at in its life. Expectancy, I guess, and then it may have to get all replaced, the most softeners. Which is one of those, they're great big tanks, they have, they suck it out of there and then put all new resin in, but that would be a whole different cost.
Those are two tenants?
Two tenants.
Cause they had two samples in there.
Yep.
Yeah, and two analysis.
Yep. So we've got the system in there, but it's obviously not working the way it should be.
So it feels been getting worse, I mean, since, and that's the deal that.
It's had to have been, and it's really weird is.
It's gradual, but.
In their, uh. When they were imported to D N R. Some samples come in good, then all of a sudden they like get a spike in a sample, and that's just really weird, they're, they're trying to figure out why that spike is happening, well. It just makes me wonder if it's. Not happen more often than what they're act, than when they're testing, so I, I think they're just on their own testing a little bit more often, to try to figure out why that spike is as far as people's.
We're gonna charge it for, or did you mean?
And it's not like, it's an added thing, the system's there, it needs to work like it was.
When you work, yeah, so. Logan should actually be staying in town.
Right. So I guess, I, I mean, as far as that analysis thing, it's just over the threshold, obviously, of making it's on our agreement with people, so I could just tell them to go ahead and do that. The, uh, resin analysis, find out if that's any good or not.
It was twelve hundred and sixty-four dollars plus tax.
Yeah, well, it wouldn't be any tax, cause it gets spilled directly.
Yeah.
The us, so it's a twelve hundred and sixty dollars when it was also. Uh, so we're gonna make a motion to.
I'll make a motion to do that, also sampling and analysis tests.
Yeah, true. All right, any other special note? Hearing none, all favor I.
I.
I oppose. Yeah, I guess that kind of covered the people's service portion. But as far as the rest, um, you know, casino, just curious, the one that changeover is gonna happen to the tower, so. Other than that, seems everything's all okay out there, so. Uh, one more spec, cool, Melissa on this one.
The only meeting that I have this week is the housing planning con, or meeting at Nyakog on Wednesday.
Is that like a regional thing?
Yeah, it'll be in April.
Okay.
So.
Cool. Using any for Melissa? Nope. Okay, thank you, Melissa.
Yeah.
People's Service covered, Department Head discussion.
Uh, I won't be available on Wednesday, just Jesse will be in charge. Um, we do have three applications in for deputies that closes on Saturday night. Um, so testing later this month. My insurance guy came up and met with us, drove two and a half hours, he came in, our first question was in the jail, I informed him. Rover and Mitchell, that ended that conversation, second one was on our policies, and I said we pay for Lexi full, he drove two and a half hours for a five minute meeting, so. Um, we're covered on that, so our insurance thing went really good.
Good. Speaking of the jail stuff, is that going all right? So far, so good?
We need to get deputies in place, cause that's a little strain on them, but, um, yeah, it's starting to level out, um. I'm gonna guess we're probably right at that fifteen, sixteen thousand dollar savings in this month.
Any prospects of deputies?
This, those three apps we got in, one of them is one of our reserve officers, which I was gonna talk to the board, one of the things we're gonna have to look at doing is opening up a residency. Um. Keep them in the county, it, it's just a lot of them in the state. Aren't doing that, um, some even have guys in other states that work for them. Um, I think if we got, and Chris Hearn is the reserve deputy for us, he lives three miles on that. By Plymouth. And I think we gotta open up that residency requirement for deputies, and just say they can live outside of the county, ten, fifteen miles, otherwise we're just not gonna find bodies.
How's that work with vehicles then?
My suggestion would be that take home vehicles. At this point would stay here, but we would look at it if it's within four to five miles out of the county. But I think we have to, if we're gonna find people.
Everybody else is doing it. Which. Has things for us, because there's large cities around that people could still live in North County and go work in these large cities, even though they're outside of the, what used to be ten miles.
Yeah.
Um, so we can very easily lose deputies because of that. So. I don't, I mean. We already got employees that live outside the county and other departments, so what's the difference? The thing would just be the vehicle situation, and that would be just, you know, your department only, cause nobody else. Gets the, also take home like that.
Is that a written policy change or something, or what, what is, what would that be?
It'd be, we got it in our Lexi pool, we just have to, we can change right enough ourselves.
So I guess if that's something you wanna bring up to the. This board to make a decision on in the future, that's. Barely up to you, but I. We. Yeah. Used to be everybody lived and worked in towns. Those days are long gone.
Those are long gone.
Well, I just. The reserve deputy that we have applying is, you've been with us for about seven years, and we've been after him to apply, and his only hope, but he, he's gonna be giving up money from where he's, he works at Portland right now. And, uh, he's a dang good applicant, and I think he'd be a long-term applicant, nice young family and that. But he's just rebuilt the house down there, three miles out of the county line, and I hate to lose someone like that, but it's just the, the wave of the future right now, I mean.
I don't know. Bring it to us, Dan.
Okay.
Something you, you think is gonna benefit your department.
So the future.
And I know you're on your way out, but. And I know you're on your way out, but.
Chair's around to change at the times.
Yeah, still running in the future, so, that's something you guys agree on in your office, bring it to us.
Okay.
Any other department heads? Where's your weekly, Mr. Lowberg?
Uh, I didn't have, the only thing I had was, I went to that meeting for you, like ten. Ten days ago or so.
Yep.
And, uh, I sat in on Department of Health meeting, and it was, their enthusiasm's great. Uh. I like most everything that they said at the time. I like, they're trying to, as I watched the video last week. As, uh, Meyer said, they're trying to give more shots and. Generate, they're going after more billings and grants, which we said all along is a problem. Uh, I just, you know, they wanna give it for, cause I mentioned to them about possibility of. Sharing certain things with another county, and I brought that up to them, and they'd looked at that, and they weren't too hip on that at the present time. They'd like to give it a try for a year to see how it works out and if they can come out of it, but. Well, we also got a printout that showed fiscal year twenty-four on there. It, it went up, gentlemen, the losses went up, so, it wasn't like it hung even, and now we're gonna work on getting it up, they just got a big mountain to climb.
Yep.
And I just don't know how that's gonna work out, I realize it's gonna cost the county money to have public health there, and. The things that they do are just, we gotta get it under control a little bit, so. But it was a very positive meeting in general, that I thought. Very enthusiastic about going after it and making changes.
That's always a good sign, I mean, and it can be now, people do it all the time, just gotta give them the opportunity and, and hopefully. The group that's there will take that opportunity and run with it, so, yeah, but, yeah, I, I mean, I think. There's enough experience there, we gotta give them a chat, shot to, uh.
That's my theory.
Decrease our losses, I would say, and that's kind of what I told Kathy last week too, was. You know, at some point it may happen, but if you guys think you can get it covered and not share services, then go for it, so.
We see a change in this thing, where it starts going the other direction.
Yep, that's a positive, so, yeah. Yeah, that it?
Yep.
Well, I did have public help board, we, uh, we did interview on Wednesday or Thursday, we interviewed two applicants, um.
Nurse?
No, or director.
Oh, okay.
We don't, let me, be the new director's job to interview for nurses, um, we just hired the department head. Um, both good, but, both good people, both, uh, local people, um, personally hired Shannon. Um, on Thursday, we had a meeting, and, or a better discussion again on budgets and stuff, um. They are, they do have one R N. Interview lined up, I think, and they're gonna kind of be watching things and deciding how many they need, um, there's times that. They don't need everybody, so I mean, you know, we might have to look at that, I don't know, Shannon wants to, does not wanna be in the office like the past director was. She wants to be able to do both, she still wants to be able to be over there working, same like Lexi, they, they both wanna be working and. Being part of the organization, and, uh, there is probably a one hundred percent increase in employee attitude over there. It's just a total turnaround, so hopefully we can keep that going, um. They've got a lot of plans, like, like you just said.
Yeah, Shannon and Lexi are really excited about it.
Been a lot of grants that they weren't allowed, allowed to apply for in the last, that they can utilize, there was things they wanted to do, but they weren't allowed to do. Uh, like the immunization things, they just didn't, we just told it wasn't worth it, and. I think here in Worth County, it could be, so, Rorber County is a different story, they got a lot more options here in Worth County, we've got a clinic. And that clinic is full. Every day, so getting your kids in for immunizations or your own immunizations, I think we can do some of that, we can actually, we can actually make some money doing that. And then, like you say, they're gonna search all of our grants, and I think budget wise, um, you know, they're already figured out how they're gonna. Do what we'd asked of them earlier, plus along with salary shifts and salary changes and personnel changes. We're looking at some savings there, knocking some of that off, and, yeah, so. Hopefully we can get that down, and I did kind of challenge, I said, you know, hopefully in the next couple of years, we can get that back down, I think the lowest point in that ten years is around two hundred thousand. And then if they could work back to that in the next year, TJ, that would be just, that'd be a heck of a good start.
Right.
And we have another department that needs to look at that too. That's conservation, cause they're, they're a pretty good sized loss to. Or, I don't wanna call it a loss, but coming out with taxpayers, they should build a bomb all of this stuff through fees and things like that, so. We need to keep, keep working on these things.
And we need to look at that casino interchange out there, taking that bottom lot that's just.
Yep.
It's just cut up and goofy, there's almost six acres down there, and turning that into a.
Play a moneymaker.
Yeah, turn in some revenue on the thing. You know, Jim said he could track it, he goes right by it, so. So that's one of the things they can do.
So that's all I am.
I had vacation nights, so. I got some salmon. Where'd you go?
I was up in Michigan.
Nice.
Right on Lake Michigan, well, boat. I did not get any salmon.
Brought some fresh fish.
I didn't catch any of those either.
There you go, they're in the lake then, right?
Bring the fills and stuff, and these are.
I see the Farm Bureau picnic made it on there's. For future, so, anything else you need on future agendas that you guys know of?
No.
Um, I guess, whatever, we decide for workshop whenever that date comes out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I don't know, do I? Yeah, I mentioned to, I know they're doing the rock run, but I think this week they're gonna start doing cold replacement cycle on. I'm not sure, I mean.
Dogwood?
Dogwood down there, okay, start. West of Fertile?
Yeah.
From the north.
Okay, okay. Well, if there's nothing else, then take your motion to a jury.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor of I? Julian is adjourned.